I know Andy did a great job also giving a staff report, kind of giving you an overview of it as well. But for people in attendance that are interested in this, I'll explain the project and tell you what is proposed here. Tommy's Express, if you're not familiar with them, they're a national car wash operator and owner and also franchise. They're located out of Collin. They have multiple sites all throughout Michigan and into other sites. I just found out Tocqueville, Georgia before this meeting, most of their sites are in Michigan. The second largest state is Florida, but they do have sites throughout Michigan. The closest here are probably a couple of sites in Grand Rapids, but they have one in Lansing that I'm aware of. And they're continually getting more and more businesses up and running. So the property that they have under contract right now is the former Rite Aid site. The address is fourteen zero one West Main Street. The property covers one point zero seven acres and is currently zoned C three. In that C three district, the car wash is permitted with a special land use. So that's why we're here in front of you tonight seeking mainly special land use approval and site plan approval. The proposed project consists of the demolition of the existing Rite Aid building and parking area. And then in its place will be reconstructed as a four thousand six hundred and twelve square foot car wash building. For an access standpoint, the site already is serviced by two driveways, one off of West Main, one off of Valley Vista. Those driveways will remain with one minor exception. Valley Vista driveway isn't, it's okay, but it's not in the greatest shape. There's no curving on it or anything like that. So they do hope to improve that as shown on the plan to give a little bit more definition and make it look a little bit nicer and feel a little bit nicer. The access that are, the circulation around the site is there are three pay lanes that'll be to the west of the building. So you'll circle around to the south end of the building, enter the building heading north and then circle. Most people use vacuums, so you'll circle to the right. And then the vacuums that are proposed are on the east side of the building. There are a total of nineteen parking spaces provided for the site, fourteen of which are vacuum spaces. From a utility standpoint, there is already water and sewer available to the Rite Aid building. For the water service, the existing water service, I think is a one inch service and that'll be removed or replaced likely with a two inch service. It might end up being a four inch service depending on what the plumbing engineer calculates for the water demand. Also, a thing to consider on the water usage is the site does have a water reclaim system. So roughly a third of the water that is used for the car wash is actually reclaimed water, which is nice to keep the environment friendly, so to speak. And then from a drainage standpoint, the proposed project reduces the amount of impervious air get on the site. So after the site is constructed, there'll be less stormwater runoff from the site than is currently there now. So that's also a plus for the project. From a building standpoint, I think the building is very attractive, but it's got a modern look. But it's primarily metal, CMU split base block, and then glass. They do have two what they call towers, but kind of they're higher structures at the entrance of the building and the exit. I did submit obviously architectural plans with that. I always feel that architectural plans are finding, Danny, look at sometimes a photo is better. So in the submit, we did submit a photo of, I think it's the Hudsonville store, which is the branding is very similar. There is one change though to what I submitted versus what's actually on my site plan. For the pay lanes, like I said, they have three pay lane going to the building. The architectural drawings throw up, show a canopy over three pay lanes. Their option is to just have one can, or one of the lanes closest to the building have a canopy and that's what they're going with here. So that can, that larger canopy that you see on the architectural plans and the photo that I submitted is actually to be smaller than what's that, than was shown on that. So I just wanted to point that out to you. As far as the special land use standards, I know there are general standards in the ordinance as well as specific standards. So we believe that we meet all of those standards as submitted in my narrative with the application. I know Andy also went through those standards. I believe he came to that same conclusion that those standards can be met or are met. We did get a copy of Andy's report. I have no issues with any of that. Two things to point out, signage, they have a signage company who do all of that. They call it signage packet. They'll put that together after site plan approval. So the sign company will work with the city and make sure everything complies along those standpoints. And then secondly, a photometric plan. Tommy's Express has general photometric plans. All their fixtures and lighting are similar from site to site. But then they do vary that from location to location based on what the municipality requires. So a specific photometric plan hasn't been submitted for this site yet, that's in the works. And then we'll work with city staff to make sure that that complies with your zoning ordinance. Other than that, and those two items are part of six conditions that Andy recommended. Again, we're all fine with all of that. But if you have any questions on the site plan, the engineering layout or anything like that, I'd be more than happy to answer any types of questions that you have along those lines. And then if you have anything business related wise, Josiah would be more than happy to answer those types of questions. So thank you again. Thank you.
Do we, let's go through the things, the national, uh, the standards?
Things, the standards, yes, thank you.
Sure. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. P here did a very good job of providing a background for what the project is. So just everyone to understand this is a former Rite Aid building in Valley, just on Main Street right on the corner there. This is a complete removal of that old building and replacement with something totally different. The driveways would be in the same spot. So he mentioned a driveway on Main Street that is actually not on this specific property. It's off to the east a little, a little bit there. The other driveway that's off of Valley just the way it obviously is, can be improved as he mentioned. The building meets all of the height requirements, max height to those tallest points there is twenty eight feet. Need setback requirements for all of the, all of the lot lines. It needs line saving requirements. Requires, you know, six parking spaces. There's nineteen provided. A bunch of those are vacuum spaces. So, you know, assuming that you would count the vacuuming spaces towards that minimum requirement, that would be acceptable. But if not, then they would have to add one more specific parking space that would not include a vacuum. I don't know if that's necessary, but that's a, I guess, an interpretive question for you. Signage, I agree. So typically what we see right is that on the site plan, we're sure where the sign is going to be. It'll show up on the building itself. But once they get far, far along into construction, we will see an application from a sign company or whoever has the specifics about the size and location and everything else. So I am comfortable with including sign, location and all of that as a condition of approval. The only comment on that is that there's a sign proposed at the corner of Valley Vista and Main Street, which is fine, but there is that twenty foot clear vision triangle that has to be maintained there. Looked like it's going to be okay with where it's shown, but it's something that I think I would just call to their attention. Like to make sure that it's, that it's in, in the right spot and we don't want to obviously, you know, impact, affect the needed or anything like that. Lighting, same thing. So a couple of things on lights. The city's standards are not all that orderous. Maximum light pole, pole height is twenty feet. It's got to be fully cut off fixtures and not exceed one foot candle at the property line. That is not difficult to comply with, so I don't think there's any issues with that. If you were inclined to approve this, I would be comfortable also with including our review of a photometric plan as a condition of approval and issues with that. Are there questions from you guys on the layout or anything before we get into the standards?
Yeah, where the vacuums were going to go. Are we going to create a green space between?
The big parking lot?
Yeah, the vacuums and where the rest of the parking lot is?
Yeah, the way I have it positioned right now is the, the vacuums have an eight foot sidewalk behind them. So you've got that eight foot space and then I've got, there's two feet of space between the property line and the back of the sidewalk. And then if you're, I don't know that it's shown on my plan, but there's a drive lane that's to the east of where Rite Aid's drive thru is right now. So there's enough space that we can get a whole row of, I show fifteen parking spaces on the neighboring property. So in total, there'll be about five feet of green space as I'm showing it. So we do have a little bit of space there that we can add shrubs. There won't be like trees or anything like that, but we do have five feet of green space that we can play around with.
Cause I, I travel for work and I see these new style car washes go all over. That's one thing and some of these new ones, they didn't do.
Oh, yeah.
Cars drive, they'll drive up to the vacuum and just drive into the parking lot next door.
Yeah, that, that actually won't happen. If you look at the, the information I was submitted, the vacuum, it has a stanchion or a post in the middle of it. So you can't, can't literally do that. You drive into the post. So it's like I'm in a parking spot and there's the center of the vacuum, the microphone. I can't drive past it. So people aren't going to be driving from Tommy's site over onto the neighboring property. That cannot happen.
Which is a shirt.
A hundred percent certain by those vacuums, that will not happen. Otherwise, they'll be falling through a pole. So.
Because we are going to have some noise. We do have offices over here. What were the hours you're planning on running this?
On the plan I submitted, it's six AM to ten PM, seven days a week. But frankly, I don't, Josiah, you can correct me if I'm wrong, they purposely make that longer than they really use because they don't want to say, yeah, we're going to be open from seven until nine and then find out that the store is really busy and then have to come back to planning commission or the city saying, oh yeah, can we get an extra hour here? So I think they leave it large so they have a little bit of room to play. Is that correct?
Well, the thing is, is vacuums make noise and you have residential close. I'm not going to, it's, cause it's not apples to apples, but when the marijuana store is open, we may have put fencing up so the headlights didn't interfere and whatever, whatever, right? And some of them did Arda Vitae, whatever that term is.
Arda Vitae?
Yeah. Just to help with the thing, I like the plan. I just would like to see something there to help buffer that noise.
Take away from asphalt, put something green behind the vacuums just as a, more of a natural barrier versus an asphalt barrier. Is that, can you look into that?
We can. The, the thing that we're kind of stuck with, so to speak, is from Valley Vista. The city requires a ten foot green belt, which is what I show. And then we have a minimum distance for free pay lanes, which I show. Building's right there. And then from that point on, it's really, you know, I've got the building, the sidewalk, parking space, drive aisle. So I mean, I've got to skip somewhere. So I might be able to pick up a foot or two near or there, but I don't, I don't, I can't like pick up a ten foot area.
No, I'm not asking for a ten foot. If you can pick up a couple of feet.
Yeah.
You two get five foot down to like a four foot.
Well, the thing with the sidewalk is when, as a part of the vacuum spaces, they have what they call Tommy balls. And that's actually where people can throw some waste to. So they have their, like a little push cart trash bin that they pull, push along that eight foot space, avoiding the post or the stanchion there. And then they can unload the little trash areas. So the one thing that I see that if needed though, I've got the drive lane or drive aisle twenty eight feet wide. They ideally like actually thirty feet there, but they've done them like twenty six feet before. So I can pick up a couple of feet there, which will give me a little more green space behind the vacuums. And if the city requires a row of Arda Vitae's or something like that, I think, I think that's possible.
I just want to stop, if you're going to, let's say you stay open until ten, right? That's a lot of lights shining towards residential. I would just assume.
Going towards that big parking lot. And going towards Culver's and Jimmy, it's not going towards residential already.
I know, but we look.
We have going in between Jimmy John's and Culver's.
I'm just saying, now's your time. Move green space there.
That seems like a bit excessive for going into a big parking lot towards other businesses.
I like the, I can bring it down. There's a lot of asphalt there right now.
Yeah.
It is.
Like I said, this, this project reduces the amount of impervious area, but like you said, I mean, the site is all paved right now. So I'm going.
I understand that that sidewalk is serviceable. That was, that's news to me. That makes sense walking behind us and the employees are safe.
I think putting a partner in and competing on safety is not worthwhile when we're cutting down on, like shining towards other parking lot.
I have two feet from the back of the sidewalk to the property line. And then I think we have a couple of extra feet east of the property line, but that's technically not our property. The seller of the property is here too. But I mean, I've got a total of about four or five feet of green space as shown on my plan. And I don't know that the ordinance requires, I mean, it's ultimate special land use. I mean, it's up to you. You can require whatever you want, but I don't know that the ordinance requires landscaping there. But again, that's beside the point because you can require whatever you like.
Are the vacuums, are they operated?
So is each one of these vacuum things its own like motor? So there's not like a central thing someplace else that, is that something that can be done to cut down on the noise? Cause I know there are some of these car washes that have vacuum facilities that have a larger centralized vacuum system someplace else that cuts down on the noise that's coming from each and every one of the machines themselves.
I, Josiah. I can speak out a little bit. I'm Josiah Jarvis with Tommy's Corporate Lead from Collin, Michigan. So thanks for having us. That vacuum system, we do individually actually help contribute less noise because they're individually ran. If we were to use a large separator, that would typically run like a bank of vacuums. They tend to put two vacuums at a time and that would be on at all times. So quite often that large separator, that large motor that's powered all of those vacuums would actually be louder continuously than each individual vacuum. Because not each individual vacuum will be used or on at all times. So as you can imagine, each of those motors contributes noise and they're not all on simultaneously.
For, for the safety of, you have car coming in both sides. The shrubbery isn't necessarily a barrier that a car would stop a car. Is there any other sites that have like a red railing or something that stops cars from going into the vacuums on the east side?
Well, like I said, there's, for the vacuum spot, there's, there's a stanchion or a post in the middle. And then on each side of it, there's what they call Tommy ball, which is a red ball. You can probably see it on the photos I submitted. But, but that literally, like in a, I'm going to walk up here to you. Like where my pen is pointing, that's, that's a post that sticks out of the ground in the middle of each of these parking spots. And then these circles are where the Tommy balls are. So literally a car cannot drive through here, cannot.
Oh, this way.
They would hit the same thing. I mean, I guess, yeah, they, they would get to the sidewalk, but they would hit that post or the Tommy ball together.
Someone's servicing all those trash cans and there's cars, public cars on the side. Kind of like some kind of barrier right there so that you don't wreck someone's car on this side. Well, parking curbs and all that.
Well, again, the sidewalk isn't right up to the property line. There's two feet of space there. So it.
They have to jump the sidewalk to get up there.
Well, not to confuse matters, but there, there is no step in the sidewalk. They, they have that flush and they do that from a safety standpoint. They have some people, you can imagine when people are vacuuming, they don't want that six inch ledge for people to trip involved. And that's part of the reason too, why they have the stanchion and the Tommy balls is for safety because then people again can't drive through.
And I'm not talking this way.
Yeah, yeah.
Discussion point.
Is there any modification to the northern driveway that's already existing? It looks like the boundary, the survey boundary splits it all.
Correct. It's a shared drive. There's an agreement in place. I think Andy had mentioned correctly sold that the driveway off West Main is actually on the neighboring property, but there's cross access reciprocal agreement between the two properties. But yeah, you're exactly right. The, the north prop, the northern road that splits the property line, nothing will be done to that. That's going to stay.
I actually have another question as well. How many staff are typically working at a time? If we have five extra parking spots, are those all going to be taken by staff or will there still be parking spots for customers as well?
Typical hours, we will have three to four team members. At maximum, we'll have five team members per shift. But unless it's an extremely busy day, we'll typically operate with three to four.
And for, for what it's worth, and Josiah, you know, knows it far better than I do. I probably designed twenty five to thirty Tommy sites. And in general, they normally have about three normal parking spaces and that's enough. They like, you know, once in a while they go four or five, but beyond that, they typically don't need, frankly.
So Andy, are we done with those first preliminary?
So we haven't gotten to any of the standards yet. Also, just as a general comment, we should open the public hearing, collect comments from the public as well. I don't want to do that now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I'd like to open it to public opinion. Remember to keep your comments down to five minutes or less. State your name and your address. And I'd like to open that right now.
In that room, five twenty five North Hudson Street. This is my first exposure to this concept. At initial blush, I'm concerned about a very bright strip mall or urban kind of situation and that close to town, in our beautiful little town. It sounds like you've done a lot of planning to control for unpleasant things like the car wax going into our water system. You know, that's a concern. You just don't have to go far to look at the Thorn Apple. I'm sure that the car washes are the only source of that hideous pollution that clogs with deep foam, Grand River and Thorn Apple. But we're, I would be interested to know what's happening to that water and how thorough the water treatment is. The other thing that concerns me is light pollution. Again, having lived in Massachusetts and New Jersey, do those lights, maybe the pre-existing lights don't have covers on the top, but the light going up into the sky is light pollution. And that affects animals and just the quality of life. So I would be concerned about the lighting, the water, the noise, the neighborhood, just having that colorful, bright situation that close to a kind of antique little town here. I don't know. These are just my initial reactions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin Quist, thirteen eighty two Remington Drive. My family owns a real estate wash. I was just curious if this commission is taking into account whether or not our community can support a second tunnel wash and a fourth car wash. And if you look at Tommy's has a real estate submission page where you can submit sites for their, you know, approval for future expansion. And they're looking for thirty thousand population within three miles. You know, if you add up our city and our township, we're about ten, eleven thousand. They're looking for about twenty thousand vehicles per day, you know, M twenty one, everybody about fifteen. And then they're not looking for any other competition within a half mile. But our store is about a quarter of a mile, maybe three tenths. And so based on their own standard, you know, we're not quite ready. And then also, you know, you guys brought up some good complaints about the noise with the vacuums kind of thing. The loudest part of car wash, of course, is the blowers. If you're standing right in the exit, you know, it's kind of like a vortex, a tunnel of noise. And that is aimed directly at those apartments. And so I just maybe take that into account as well. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Steve Pasca and I actually live in Cascade, the twenty five seventeen Ashford Port South in Michigan, front on three oh one. But we are the owners of the property that's being discussed right now. We'd be selling the property to Tommy's. Our family, here with my wife, Lacey, our family has owned this property since the nineteen sixties. I'm not exactly young. And when I was sixteen years old, we had Everhard's grocery store there. And I used to go there on Sundays and pick up the parking lot litter for ten dollars from my dad. Everhard's left and then Plumb's came in. I hope folks remember all of this. Family Fair went across the street. They didn't think that they could compete. So Plumb's divided it off as a parking lot and into a shopping center. And after their lease expired, we took it over. So let me just make a couple of points about what's been said. Culver's is property we sold to them. They're open until, my wife, she's checked it, ten o'clock at night. So the hours that they're talking about for this enterprise is not any different than that. PC Pizza is ours and they're open until ten o'clock on the weekends. I don't know exactly how long. Jimmy John's is open until, but as far as, you know, lights are concerned, ten o'clock really not that late. We had Walgreens in there for years. They were open in the evening. They had lights on. They probably had just as many lights on as Tommy's would have, would have. I don't think we've been to Tommy's, but we're members even before any of this came up. It's a great company. They do a great job cleaning and washing cars. They'd be a good contribution to this community. Now, we had Rite Aid there since nineteen ninety six. I'll never forget it. The guy came into my dad's office. I don't know if any of you remember him, Pasca, my father. I was his attorney at the time. And I came in from Rite Aid. We got that deal done in two days. And they started, I think it opened up in nineteen ninety seven. They stayed until, it was actually last July that they left. We were told repeatedly that that store was not going to close because it did such good business. It had, it had more, as I understand, I was told by them, so I can't surround fire on this, but they had more prescriptions than Walgreens did. But corporate made a decision. They were going to close everything in Michigan and Ohio. So our pledge is vacant. I think we've been good neighbors. I don't think anybody's really complained about anything that we've done at our location. We keep it clean. We keep it nice. My wife is in charge of all of that kind of thing for our, for our company. We've got people who take care of it all the time. Been vacant for a while. This is the best offer that we've had. We're very, you know, people are saying, well, we'll intrude on this or intrude on that. Well, that's our property. We're not concerned that much about them going over three or four feet or something like that. We want to work with them because we think it's a good addition for us. We think it's a good addition for your community. I really hope that you give positive, responsibly, a reply. Thank you.
David, over come. Okay, and close the whole period for tiny wash. And move on to the standards.
Yep. So starting on page, bottom of page two of my status report. So these are the site plan review standards. So for every site kind of comes from the planning commission for your building, you have to go through these. I have to read each one. That'll take a while, but I'll summarize, summarize each one briefly. The first one is that the uses proposed will not adversely affect the public health, safety and welfare. Uses would take into account the property, uses of property, adjoining property, et cetera. Our comment here is that this is, you know, this is consistent with an auto oriented commercial strip along Main Street here. We don't expect any, you know, significant adverse impact on the public health, safety or, or welfare here. Be safe, convenient when congestion will define vehicular pedestrian circulation shall be provided. And then related to that is item C, the arrangement of vehicular pedestrian connections shall be intended to provide a safe and efficient circulation system. Here we think this is a, a well laid out site. It's, it does not have any driveways on Main Street, which is good. The traffic pattern, circulation to me, I think makes sense, that logical. Typically you require with businesses on Main Street, some kind of a pedestrian connection to the building. Here I don't know that that makes sense because this isn't something where people will be walking in for, you know, food or something like you would see elsewhere. So that's not something that we addressed here and don't, and I really think it's necessary. You can of course include it if you want to. But we do not suggest that here. Under de-toxicity, removal or adulteration of natural features, which there aren't in, in the property because it's already developed. Item E requires satisfactory assurance from the provisional requirements. Other topical ordinance as posed, et cetera, shall be met. And if app relates to the master plan, it needs to be consistent with the master plan. We note that this is planned and has been planned and has continued to be planned for the commercial auto oriented commercial business. So this is generally speaking, consistent with the city's matching plan. Questions on any of those standards? If not, continuing on to these special land use approved review standards. These are general standards that apply to all special land uses, no matter what they are. If it's a special use, they would have, you would have to find each of these standards are met prior to approval. So item A, the proposed special land use shall be designed, constructed, operated and maintained so it can be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with existing or current characters of the city. You know, the building is certainly unique looking. You do not regulate building form for the most part. You know, so we think for the most part, this is, you know, it's a decent looking building. It's going to be compatible with the adjacent parcels. If there are concerns about noise or about compatibility, usually do have the authority to require some changes. One thing I would point out with respect to lighting is that the city does for all new development, has for quite some time, required fully cut off downward facing fixtures so we're not, you know, shining lights up into the sky. And the height limitation per light poles is relatively low, 20 feet. So this isn't something where we have, you know, these old light bulbs on 50 foot poles that are shining all over the place. And we would ensure that the photometric plan keeps all of that light on the property as well and not shining it onto neighboring properties with particular attention to the apartments there to the north. Item B, again, relates to consistency with the master plan, which we discussed. We feel that is. Item C, that it shall be serviced by essential public facilities such as highways, streets, police fire, et cetera. I think the site is designed to facilitate that. Part of the city's process, as you know, sort of post-approval is to have everyone within the city department sign off on that and address any issues as they come up. Item D, the land use should not create excessive additional requirements for public cost or facilities and services. We did ask about the water usage on this site. And Mr. Woody was timed enough to kind of give us a generalized overview. You know, this is very easy to vet, just based on day-to-day traffic, some days more, some days less. But he indicated that they anticipate, you know, a facility like this to serve 500 vehicles a day. Each wash is about 28 gallons of water, so you're in the neighborhood of 40,000 gallons a day of water usage. We also asked the city's DPDW director about this and they said that that it's not something that they are concerned about. The usage is not high enough for them to, you know, cause any significant harm from there. And so, you know, in light of all that, you know, is it maybe a little higher than you would expect for, you know, Rite Aid? Yeah, but is it excessive or is it excessive at public cost with all the facilities? No, we don't believe that it is. So I think that that standard is better.
Just to add, it adds 14 minutes a day to the pumping of the water treatment line. So that's my moment.
Item E, the proposed special lane use should not involve uses activities, processes, materials, et cetera, that would be detrimental to a person's property or the general welfare. You know, generally speaking, we think this is okay. We did have a comment in here to kind of address noise. So we've kind of talked a little bit about that already in terms of the vacuum. If you do want to look at any sort of noise mitigation, you know, for that or where you exit the car wash. You know, the ones that I've been through, they're usually in closure. There's a door that opens when you drive out. If there is concern about the impact on that property to the north, I think you could look at requiring some kind of mitigation there. Otherwise, you know, early in this design process, we had some conversations with the applicant about how to arrange the vacuums, whether they should be on the Valley Vista side or on the east side. We felt the east side was most appropriate because it would be part of farthest removed from any of the neighboring residences there. And so, you know, overall, you know, only real concern here is noise. And we think there are some solutions to that. If it's something that you share. Then again, with item F, it shall comply with applicable title state local requirements, which would be addressed also as a condition of approval. Questions on any of those? If not, the last section, so in 1704 sub V of the zoning ordinance, we have specific review standards for car washes specifically. So one, all washing activities must be carried out within a building. So that standard is met. Two, vacuuming activities may not be conducted within a required yard. Here, you know, required yard on the side is actually zero, so they are allowed to have those right up to the property line because that's still a commercial next to them. If that was in a different district, that would be a different story. But because there has a commercial zone next to them, they're actually not required to have any side yard setback over there. And then the third standard requires sufficient stays to accommodate queuing. And so again, they've got about 25 stacking spaces in there. And with the way that these operate, I think two of the three lanes are membership lanes at that rate. So those are pretty much just scan and go. There's not a delay there while you wait for people to pay. So the pace of vehicles moving quickly, for the most part, is going to be a little faster with that type of approach. And frankly, 25 stacking spaces is a lot in these. You know, the restaurants and stuff that we look at, we're looking at seven to 10, and this is, you know, for the double that. So again, no major concern there. So we did recommend the planning commission approve the site plan and special land use request. We did include the six conditions of approval. The first four are conditions that are imposed, and I would be thankful that it comes through here. Specifically, I guess I call your attention to numbers five and six. Five is about signage, so it's got to comply with everything in zoning ordinance. And it can't be within that tiered region area, which is sort of a 25 foot gray triangle there at the corner. And then six requires a photometric plan and compliance with the lighting standards of the ordinance. So that's something that post-approval, they would provide to us. We would review the photometric plan to make sure that it meets the requirements. I'm confident they would not have any issues reading those. So to me, really, the only questions or sort of discussion items that you might want to sort of figure out here tonight would be anything that you want to do to mitigate noise either to the north or where the vacuum machines are on the east. And then secondly, if there is, if you have any concerns, you want to have any landscaping or something like that along any side where those vacuums are, that's certainly something that you could require. I do, so looking at some of the images of the other Tommy's in the area, I kind of see what they look like. It would be, I mean, I think I agree with Steve. It would be very, you knew it would take a sort of deliberately negligent person to drive over and through that. I mean, they would destroy something in the process, including their car. So never say never. Somebody might do something like that. To me, isn't, the design does not seem like it's something that really easily facilitates somebody not paying attention to do something like that. Design kind of limits that because there's a whole red smack in the middle of the parking space. The inner corner where the stripe is, there's a big red ball sitting right there. So to me, it's kind of hard to miss. And then it looks like, do you guys have the canopies on there too, like they have for the other sites? So there's been be like a canopy, kind of a triangle canopy thing over the vacuum as well. So it's going to be easy to see. So I don't have any concerns about.
Yes. I don't think there's, I don't have a concern about cars like pulling through there. Certainly, if you wanted to add some more green or landscape or something like that, you can see if there's something there.
Canopy looks like a structure that was.
Correct, yeah.
I was looking at the black and white, you know, two dimensional picture and like.
Yep.
It's just going to be like this all in the middle of the parking lot. But with the canopies there, I think it would give it more height and depth to the flat parking lot.
Yep.
I mean, there's pictures of them like that. Did this, does this HDMI thing work? See if I plug in my computer, it'll look up over there, you know?
It should. It's a brand new system that isn't quite up and running properly yet.
Well, you can see, so I mean, I looked up on Google Street and there were some pictures of the existing facilities in the area. So this is one in, this works, before I start talking. This is one in Genesee here on Chicago Drive. So I can see this here is the pole, right? And then this is, it's in the middle of the space and then these are those balls you're talking about, right?
Yep.
And there's also one on Plainfield. If you're in the parking lot, this is what it looks like as well. So again, this one has a little wall there, but as you can see, it takes some work for someone to just sort of correct through that again. Landscape kind of backside, totally with you guys.
When I was building Shell gas stations, I would never thought a car would push the ice machine into the store. And it happened multiple times. So I've seen it all.
I mean, I'm not going to say it's never been. I'm just saying the design is not really.
But I like how you're showing the vacuums, the balls, and you're actually showing green space behind it. This is a really unique area for us to add some green space to that area. Because if we don't, it's just a big asphalt, everything. And opportunity is now if we as a board would like to see green space put in, which I personally would like to see. I don't, I'm not saying eight, 10 feet. I'm saying whatever you can, you can fit, but.
Well, you have some there now, right? Yeah, I've got, on our property, I have about, I know I have 2.1 feet on our property. And then on the neighboring property, I show a sliver of green leftover. But I don't know that the neighbor wants to plant stuff on his side. But I would envision like a row of shrubs or something there just to provide some definition.
That's kind of what.
Yeah, that would be good, a row of shrubs.
Yeah.
You're talking about like right here?
Right on the property line, basically, if we're on top. I'm not talking like big, kind of, on top.
Just like that.
Kind of Harbinger type thing, tall and skinny type.
That's exactly what I was, I probably didn't do a good job.
No, I follow you. Yep.
Because to me, it just beautifies that corner, right? It's separating you from everybody else.
Sure.
It makes you stand alone. And I just, now's the time to ask for green.
Secondly, have you thought about snow removal? Where are you going to push snow?
Um, I don't know. We specifically talked about it. It's my own opinion is if, you know, if there are, worst case scenario, they take up a vacuum space or two. There is a little area at the southeast corner of the site. But yeah, we haven't given, like, I don't have like a snow removal plan in place, but there are areas on the site that they can temporarily have snow and won't impact their business at all.
To add to, we traditionally use a snow melt system. So on the east drive area into the car wash, that will all be snow melt. And then same thing with the exit of the car wash. So primarily, the snow would just mostly kind of accumulate in that vacuum area, which at most of our sites, you know, we take care of that ourselves on the site without issues.
Okay. Does that weather's come?
Yep.
Yeah, whether we like it or not.
Okay, any other questions for them? And they are going to submit a photoelectric?
Yeah. Photometric plan. So the question then, so do you want to add to our list of conditions of approval? We're through these six here. We can add a seventh one that requires revisive landscaping plan. This shows landscaping along the eastern property line between the, you know, behind the vacuums, basically. That's what you're asking for, right? So if that's something that you want to add as a condition of approval on that.
Any green space on the east side? Any green space on the east side as a condition?
If everybody else could.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to see that.
I don't understand the state plan.
No. But he's just going to put it in as a condition.
What do you say that includes green space or anything? Along the eastern property line, behind the vacuums?
Good? Okay. Any other discussion? I will entertain a motion to accept this.
I'll make a motion to accept the state plan with those seven conditions.
And I will support. Any other discussion? Sue, you give me a voice hold, please?
Commissioner Cadwelder?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Holtz?
Yes.
Commissioner Godula?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
And Chair Ellis?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
And I move this into a status report. Do you have a mic here?
The only thing that I would add is Lowell Arts, we're, the city is partnering with Lowell Arts to put a public art master plan in place. So they're asking for input from people. They have a survey on their website up until September 30th where people can inquire. Very similar to what we did with our master plan. So I'd encourage people to take a look at that.
And Andy?
Andy, I don't think so. I think we're good. So I guess the only thing is on, to kind of continue working on the housing items. So I think we have one other item on that list. We kind of worked at a lot of coverage. So depending on our next meeting agenda, we can start it on that. I'm going to start to kind of work on that last step that we could really analyze on that list that we provided. We provide a strategy of increasing, to increase the supply of housing in the city.
Okay. Commissioners, your members. Mike?
Good.
Hey, Andy. Marty?
I'm here.
You're good? You're still alive?
Yeah.
Cool.
I'm good.
John? Neither, either. And I will then now take, I'll entertain a motion to close this meeting.
I'll make a motion that we close the meeting at 8:35. Also one.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close the same. The meeting is closed.